Indeed get. So we're going to try and see how two goes and then help with the ample notice that childcare arrangements can be made and because we value that those afternoons for professional learning and learning that can't always happen during our traditional in-service day schedule. So we would appreciate the support of the board as well as far as the previous calendar, right?
Thank you. Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the following high school overnight trips, the PA Key Club Convention in Pittsburgh, PA on March 29, 2019 to March 31, 2019, and the music department trip to Disneyland, I'm sorry, Disney World in Orlando, Florida on December 4, 2019 to December 8, 2019.
Second.
Comments or questions from board members?
I had a question. Did we ever get any clarifying information about the Key Club? Can you use the funds fundraised by all students for the benefit of the few students? We didn't wait or?
Just a little bit, please.
So the question had to do with the funding and fundraising within the Key Club and its impact on the trip. We did, based on some committee conversation, talk to the advisor and get some of that information from that. Key Club does events all year long, and so there are lots of events that Key Club does. This is one of the events. The students do have a fundraising target to help generate that money for all of their events. The event that we're talking about is about $1,900 is what their estimate is. There's some things there in terms of food costs. About 900 of that is carryover from the previous year in terms of funds that were unspent that they dedicated to this. There was a $500 donation, which leaves $500 being donated from the club funds. This was open to all, but because of a conflict with a class event, there are not as many students who are able to go. And so that's one of the things that we're fixing moving forward. There was two really good events that were planned. They just didn't talk to each other, so they ended up on the same weekend. And so that's a conflict that we caused, just in terms of planning events and so where we can. And there's lots of things going on. We can't always plan to avoid them, but moving forward, we will do that. This is a very small portion of the fundraising that is done overall for all of their events.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment about it for anyone who wasn't at the activities meeting when we discussed it. I think it is an exciting opportunity, so I'm glad our Key Club students are going to go. It's providing these students the opportunity to have leadership training for a very affordable price that I think will be valuable to them. And the hope is that they'll get more students to, you know, sign up for it. But as Dr. Bolton explained, there's a conflict. But I'm excited about it and I'm grateful to the advisor for, you know, making the arrangements and being willing to take the students.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2019-2020 Penrich School District Calendar. Questions or comments from board members?
Just to echo what Lisa said, thank you. It is a long process, but been on the board three years now, and you know, it has changed since I got on the board. And I think it's changed in a really positive way, so I appreciate your effort.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, and our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 5. Next up, curriculum. Mrs. Cullen?
Thank you. We have three proposals for you tonight. The first one is the elementary reading program improvement called Words Their Way.
Can you speak up, please?
This is an extension of, it's called the Elementary Reading Program, Words Their Way. It's an add-on to things we've already been doing. Dr. Scheid, do you want to, do you have anything that you want to say about it?
I keep reaching for that. Yes, it's actually a word study program that will be a component of the full balance literacy that we are implementing at the elementary schools. So Words Their Way will be implemented in two of our schools, and 21 pilot teachers will also continue with it.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Like to make a motion to approve the, and then we, I'm sorry, we also have the program improvement for the journalism honors book approval and the sixth grade being a writer, which is again another part of that language arts that we had is being extended into our middle schools. So I'll make a motion to approve all of them together.
I'll second. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
And our next curriculum meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 4.
Next up, facilities. Mr. Kraus?
Thank you. The facilities committee did meet on January 8. We reviewed a list of obsolete items, as well as the capital projects timeline. The capital projects, real quick, are district-wide elementary school air conditioning design, Siler Elementary fire alarm system replacement, Dibler Elementary School switchgear replacement, district-wide paving improvements, high school window replacement and masonry repair, various food service equipment replacement projects, and goof flooring replacement. The bids have been advertised twice so far. There's one more round of advertising to be done on January 28, followed by a bid deadline and pre-bid conferences. We also reviewed the results of water testing that was conducted at all 11 buildings, various points of use. This was for lead. Happy to report that all locations were below state limits. So that was good news. And I have one motion tonight for the obsolete items. It's a motion to obsolete items identified as A through G.
Do you want a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Okay. The next facilities committee meeting is scheduled for February 12.
Thank you. And next up is finance.
So we have, we have arrived at the contracts portion of the finance committee. I don't know if there's certain things that people wanted to address before we get into the motion, and if people want to vote on things separately. There were a couple of things, there were a couple of questions. I wanted to follow up with some information, and I just need to pull up the information real quick. But urban water technology, there was a question asked about the cost analysis of that compared to what else is out there. And the, and Kelly Harper did reach out to, you know, try to find other testing companies to try to see if there was anyone that, you know, anyone else that does it. He was able to find one other company that actually does the testing, and it was Santatoga. And the quote for those three buildings was $650.56 higher than the quote that we have here. And that was the only other company that they were able to find that does that kind of a testing. So I just wanted to follow up on that. And then I didn't know if we wanted to address some of those, you know, beginning comments that had to do with Rachel's challenge.
How about I suggest that we consider moving on items A through M, but retracting K?
Okay.
And handle those contracts, and then we'll open up Rachel's challenge for conversation and do it that way. If the board is comfortable with acting on the other items, okay, why don't we see if there's a motion for that then?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve contracts A through M with the exception of K.
A second.
Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
And then let's see if we have a motion and a second for item K, and if we do, we can go to that conversation around it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Rachel's challenge, item K.
I'll second.
Okay. Questions or comments for board members?
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity then to address some of the questions and information that were asked at the beginning, as well as any other questions that the board may have in terms of the contract. Mr. Foster mentioned something around the teacher kits and the materials in terms of the teachers using them and their comfort level. We have vetted everything that is available to us, but not everything in the package is made available until you purchase, and so we have not seen everything. Our plan, as with all curricular materials, is to allow the teachers to help make that decision. And so we will, as part of the contract, those of you who have read it, there are afternoon trainings for our middle school and our high school students and teachers. As a result of those trainings, it will be those planning teams, if approved, to make recommendations to their schools, to the four secondary schools, in terms of how this will be implemented in their program. So there is not an expectation that three middle schools will do the exact same thing. Those students and teachers will be charged to do that. Their resources will be made available to them, and so there will be pieces of them that they may use. There will be other pieces that they will not, but we will allow the teachers and the students who are appropriate to make those decisions. Anything that we have questions about, we obviously will vet, and anything that might be possible concerns we would bring to the curriculum committee to discuss, if there was anything we had any concerns about, once we see all of them here. There was a question about the prices and the negotiation that happened. I was the one who ended up speaking with them for the last time in terms of money. The numbers that were quoted about the other packages from other districts, they are very similar with the prices for one package. And so obviously, I'm not looking at the details. I would appreciate if you would email them to me. The $4,000 number, I'm going to assume, was either a package that is no longer offered or was a while ago, from a timing standpoint, because the price is now around that $4,800 to $5,400 number, the numbers that were given to me for one package. But our contract has three separate packages, one for the first day, one for the second day, and one for the evening presentation. So there are three different packages for our price, which would explain why total would be more than the individual piece from that standpoint, although I would appreciate looking at that information, Mr. Foster, because we have not signed anything yet, obviously. So if I can negotiate with leverage, I would use it if we have it. There were some questions around Daryl Scott and his presentation or comment around him only for parents. That is now true. Mr. Scott's schedule is now such that he only does evening presentations for large groups. He no longer does the classroom assemblies or presentations. He did at one point do that. We pushed pretty hard, but no longer has that piece from that standpoint. The only additional information, since I was not at the committee meeting and I was one of the people who did some of the legwork, we do have monthly superintendent meetings at the IU for the intermediate unit sponsors. I did ask at that meeting whether any of the other superintendents had had this. There are three area school districts in Bucks Counties who have had some version of this. One had the elementary program and two had the high school program, as recent as two years ago and as long as five years ago. There are all three superintendents, two of which were there when they happened. One of them was not there, and so he was just speaking from memory in terms of what he was reporting, said that they had a positive experience with the company and with the materials. Two of the three could point to things that still happened in their high schools. It was the two high schools. They said there are things that still happen in our high schools as a result of those reports. Because one of the things I said was the carry-on training, and it's important to me that this turns into something long-term for the schools as they see fit. And the two high schools said they did. The elementary schools said that they did not, simply because at their time, it fit their theme for the year perfectly at their five elementary schools. And so they brought them in to fit to the theme, and all five elementary schools did the same theme, and it was very successful for that year, but they changed the theme the following year and did not continue with it. So that was the additional information we received from other superintendents as we were vetting the program.
And I think that factored in too in the discussion. So, you know, when, when we go to the, when we go to the PSBA conference, you know, obviously, there are all kinds of great information and bring that back to the district, and then we sit down with the administration and share those things. And then they kind of weed through and say, you know, these are good things that we should move forward on, and, you know, maybe these are things that don't really fit into what we're doing. So ultimately, it ends up being an administrative recommendation on what things, you know, are worthwhile to move forward with and what things aren't. And part of that discussion was that, you know, it didn't seem to be as worthwhile at the elementary level, based on the type of program that it ends up being at that level, and that's why we didn't, that's why we didn't move forward with that aspect of it. But it seemed to be something that was really helpful and the, and the carryover was there for the, you know, for those upper grade levels, and that's why we, you know, that's why it ended up being proposed the way that it was. So, and as far as Mr. Rush's, you know, concern, I think, you know, the administration then vets that and, you know, goes through the same process that other assemblies go through, which, you know, is really, you know, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but I don't, I don't know how, I don't, I don't know that we have a necessarily a vetting process of assemblies, other than the administration, you know, evaluates them and sees whether or not they're worthwhile. You know, I, I don't, it's usually, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, most assemblies are not district, you keep talking.
I know.
Most assemblies are not district-wide, right? Most things that we're bringing are done at the building level. The buildings have very wide autonomy in terms of the types of things that they bring in. All of them have appropriate messages that fit to the climate and culture of that building. And so many of those are word of mouth. Many of those are, we had them last year. They're really good. You have them this year. And so most of them are that piece. This obviously is a different level because of the number of people who are potentially impacted, both by the presentations as well as the follow-through, where that is not a normal piece of our assemblies. The building might have a follow-through, but there is not the district-wide measurement of an assembly's effectiveness at that level. It's the right thing for that building at that time, and then they capitalize on those that way. There is not an official approval process that we go through to vet an assembly, you know, generally at the, at the individual building.
And when you look at the number of students that are actually, that are actually going to get this presentation, you're talking about, it's the equivalent of all seven elementary schools, when you think about it, because each grade level is essentially the size of an elementary school, and we're doing eight grade levels. So it's actually even more than that. You know, so I, you know, there have been comments about this being one presentation. It's actually five presentations. It's professional development. It's training. And then it's an ongoing program that then the district carries forward. So, and, you know, within our SEL program and our comprehensive plan. So it's, it's something that kind of fits in that program going forward. It's more than just an assembly or a presentation. So does anyone have any other comments or questions?
I do. This is Anne. I, I just wanted to, I heard data brought up, and I did discuss this in the committee meeting. The company hired outside to do an independent statistical study. So it's important to see what the impact is of this program on communities that, that implement the program. So they did perform a statistical analysis, which was not just a cause and effect analysis. It was a highly, it's a high-level analysis. It's called a multivariate analysis of covariates, which is a lot of words.
Well, that's true.
So, you know, and I'll try not to get too technical, but it's taking an independent variable and comparing it to a dependent variable with an additional variable that's controlled. And all of that to mean that they looked at the interrelationship of the variables before they put this data out. So the data is strong with this program. I feel that's important to point out, to the point where they actually released a press release in 2017 stating that their data showed 84% reductions in disciplinary referrals. And also, they did pre and post attitudinal surveys of 9,881 students from across the U.S., and they reported a 282% increase in the number of students feeling safe at school after participating in Rachel's Challenge. I think that is significant enough on its own, but they have all this data. So at our committee meeting, we discussed the data and how there were multiple schools that had reported the disciplinary referral decreases from this statistical analysis that was performed. So I just wanted to bring that up, because I know there's a lot of concern about data, data-driven results, and that is, this program has the data to back it up.
And I, I just want to kind of piggyback on that with something that Mr. Rush had commented on, which is the PACE survey. And I, you know, I was going through our PACE survey for 2017, because that was the last survey, you know, that we've had done. And the planned suicide was up to 17%, depending on the grade level, and an average of 9.6%. Attempted suicide was up to 12%, depending on grade level, average of 10%. Needed medical treatment for suicide attempt, up to 2.4%, depending on grade level, 2% average. Of the kids who had said they were bullied in the last year, 49% of them indicated that they were depressed. They were so sad, they stopped doing usual activities. 38% shared that they had considered suicide in the last year. 30.8% made a suicide plan in the past year. 26.9% attempted suicide one or more times in that past year. I look at these numbers, and I look at the survey, I look at the analysis that Sheri's talking about, and then the presentation that I viewed and how powerful the presentation was, too. An entire room full of board members and administrators across the state, and the impact it had on everyone in that room, and, you know, really people across the county who had brought that also forth to the IU as, you know, something that they felt was impactful enough to bring that back to the districts. And I, I look at those numbers and, you know, even, is this going to have the same impact on every kid? Maybe not. But even 40% of that, even 40% of these, these high numbers, 40% of these numbers, which I think is one of the numbers that, you know, Sheri had just indicated, if it's, if it saves one kid, if it puts one kid on a better track, are we doing the right thing? You know, and, and we haven't found a program that has this kind of an impact on kids. And so, you know, from the perspective of what we're getting and how many kids we're actually impacting, how many presentations we're giving, the carry-through on this being an entire program, the professional development, the training, and the impact that it has, you know, even if this impacts a fraction of students. And, you know, I, I think that that's, that's a powerful thing that we can do, and that's one that I mind. So any other comments or questions?
I do want to emphasize that it is going to be, you know, over half of our students, at least. I, I actually did the math. I'm not the math person, but it's 56% of our students, at least, that will be seeing it, plus however many people from our community members, you know, community members, parents. It's open to everyone who lives in the Penrich School District, and I strongly, strongly encourage you to come and see the program if it's approved, when it occurs. I also want to just touch on something that Megan had mentioned. The SEL is our social and emotional learning program, which has been in effect in the district for how many years? At least five, I would say. And over those years, we have looked at many, many different things. As school board members, myself, as a PTO president, a CCM president, you get bombarded with information. I have five children. I've seen lots of assemblies come and go and, and different things. You're contacted by people who have programs. And there's always been an element missing, I felt, to our social and emotional learning program. We do a lot of things from the outside, things that I talked about at the committee meeting. We have, on my time, you know, during my time on the board, which would be Megan's time as well, we've added extra school psychologists, and we've added extra help in the guidance department. So we're sort of doing things from the, what I would call the outside in. And I, and I always thought that there was one element that we were missing, which was going from the student perspective out. From, instead of going from top to bottom, going from the bottom to the top and having the students taking initiative. And I believe initiative is one of our monthly themes that we used to do. So I, I would like to just speak to the value of it. Since Sheri did all the, the data, and she's, she's definitely the, the data person, and those numbers are very important. I agree. But since we had our finance committee meeting and before this, and the ensuing two weeks, or whatever that was, I saw Dr. Oz on, on TV. I rarely watch TV, but one day it was on, and, and well, there was Dr. Oz. And he was talking about longevity. And someone said, well, what about being happy? He said, yes, happiness absolutely is a key to having a long life. And he said, there's a few things that you can do to make sure you increase your, to, to help you increase your level of happiness. Number one was interact. He said that loneliness is one of the biggest problems facing us today. It's ironic. It seems like we're all out there connected all the time by social media, but he said loneliness is a huge problem, so you need to interact with people. He also said that it's important for you to find people who are like-minded, to connect over something. And, and that's kind of the purpose of having this whole comprehensive district-wide, community-wide program, is to unify people over something and have us focus on how we are like, more than how we're different. Everybody's very entrenched right now, and this is something that can pull all of us together. So I'm looking forward to that aspect. And the third thing that he said is that you need to have a purpose. And this is what I'm most looking forward to for our children, to be honest with you. I think that we need any time that we can create opportunities for students to be a leader or, and a friend and be of service. And that's my, I'm in a service, I was in the Service Fraternity, Alpha Phi Omega. Those are our three cardinal principles. And I tell my children all the time, leadership, friendship, and service. They're great guiding principles for your life. And this will provide that. It's going to give students who might not have an opportunity to be a leader in, you know, band, or drama, or student council. We're going to have 100 students that are going to be leaders, and it's not going to be all the typical people that you might think that would be leaders. They can stand up, and they can have a purpose, and they can feel like they're doing something to better their community. And then the last thing I just want to talk about was a quote that I saw from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., since of course yesterday was the observance, observance of his birthday. And the quote was, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing for others?" And I thought, boy, that's perfect, because that's exactly what this program is about. What are you doing for others? But the secret, which anybody who's involved in service, you know, you know, that when you do for others, you're actually doing for yourself. You're building up yourself. You're making yourself more confident. You're making yourself feel that you have a purpose. And I think that's valuable, and that's why I'm really excited to bring this program to Penrich. I hope it's supportive.
And I also think there's very limited opportunities to bring parents in and engage parents in the process.
Can you also speak up, please?
And I think it's important that this gives us the opportunity to bring in the parents and have more, you know, parent engagement. And all the studies show how much that benefits kids to have, you know, parent involvement. One of the things that I think we didn't touch on, as far as Mr. Foster's comments, was about the cost being built into the budget. So if you wouldn't mind, Dr. Bolton, touching on that.
Sure. I believe he mentioned in terms of structural deficit and, and the development of the original budget for the year. Had a conversation with Mr. Daubert, I'm sorry to ask you a question that we had prepped in terms of coming before. As you look at the revenues and expenses for the year, are you comfortable with this, this coming out of the general fund without us coming into danger of hitting a structural deficit for the year, based on the information right now, that these funds can become out of the general fund as it was designed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just say one thing? I, I want to point out that there was a lot of discussion about comparing this program to other available programs, but it's important to point out that there are no programs like this. This is a program that addresses a comprehensive, it's more of a comprehensive approach towards behavior in the long run. If you look at, there's a lot of studies out there that will tell you that aggressive behaviors start at a very basic level, and that, you know, continuing to allow spiraling incivility, so to speak, continue on and on, will lead to aggressive behaviors. So if you can implement a program- So if you can implement a program that helps change attitudes and thought patterns and behaviors at a more basic level, you're doing a world of good, not just right then, but long-term. So I just want to point out there's, this is inclusivity, it's diversity, it's civility, it's behavior, it's kindness, and I think that if you just look at the website, you'll really, you'll, you'll get to, to love it.
Well, thank you all for your input and questions and comments, and I think we've exhausted this at this point. So if, if, if nobody else has any questions, are we okay moving forward on that?
The only thing I want to mention is that we do need to make sure we're utilizing the resources that are in our backyard, because I know I've reached out and had discussions with Penn Foundation. I'm sorry, I have a cold. So they have some great programs too, and I know they're very low to no cost to us, but as you've all said, we can't measure. If it saves one life, then worth it, I agree, but we need to look at what everyone else has to offer as well. Thank you.
No, I agree with that. I think we're, you know, definitely exploring all of those things and bringing all of the things.
Okay.
So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, next up is the school real estate tax penalties. So I'll make a motion to deny requests to waive school real estate tax penalties A through C. Questions or comments from board members? I just wanted to comment that, you know, though we sympathize with some of these situations, and it's a really difficult, you know, it's difficult to make and approve this motion for all of us, and I know that there's, you know, I've, I've had that conversation with many board members, you know, the, the recommendation is that if we, we do it in, you know, if, if we approve it for someone, then we have to approve it for everyone, and, you know, that it, that legally we shouldn't be getting into that situation. Mr. Rill, did you want to add to that at all from a legal perspective?
There are always exceptions that prove the rule, but Ms. Bannister Clements generally joined Mr. Daubert in suggesting that even though many of these are difficult situations, it is generally our recommendation to deny the request to waive, I'm sorry, Mrs. Rill, I end up driving nuts, world's greatest mumbling, to deny the petition for waiver with the understanding from members in the public that these are tough decisions, but they go to our base, and it's a significant issue for our support.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, student activity account. I'll make a motion to approve student activity account, high school executive council, class of 2022, established. Second. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. The next finance committee is scheduled for, I'm sorry, the next finance committee meeting is scheduled for February 12th. Next up is the IU report. The IU board met on Tuesday, January 15th, and I just had a few things that I, I wanted to share. We approved the programs and services budget, and the cost per student was four dollars and fifty-five cents, that has, that is unchanged from last year. And part of that, even though the cost, even though their costs have gone up, they, due to their entrepreneurial efforts, they have been able to offset those increases and keep the cost per student the same, and so the cost per student is still the four dollars and fifty-five cents. So every district would be paying the same amount unless their enrollment has changed. So obviously, if they have more students, theirs would go up because it's a per-student cost, and if their student number of students has gone down. You know, so, so great budget and great job on, on their part for trying to find other ways to, to bring in funding as well. Another thing that I wanted to mention, Joanne Parati is most well-known for doing, helping with the comprehensive planning in all of the districts in the county, and she was featured recently in Community Health Magazine, A Matter of Importance. And the reason they, they did a spread on her is because she has bravely battled breast cancer, and she is a breast cancer survivor, and so she agreed to do a spread in here to help women, to raise awareness that they need to get their mammograms. And I thought it was a really, you know, powerful and personal thing that she did in, you know, in, in doing that and being a part of, you know, of this magazine, and, you know, that's difficult to do and, and put your personal life out there, and she did that to try to benefit other women and help other women, you know, identify it early on and, and focuses on the significance of that, so, you know, kudos to her for doing that. Another thing that I wanted to share is sensory story hour is happening in, it, they're not that local to us, but Southampton Free Library and Warminster Township Free Library. The Southampton one is Monday, February 11th at 11:00 a.m., and the Warminster one is Monday, February 25th at 11:00 a.m., and it's a special storytime ideal for children who are differently abled. Whether your child is on the autism spectrum, has sensory processing issues, or feels overwhelmed with loud noises or crowds, this inclusive program may be just what you are looking for. Storytime consists of thirty minutes of preschool-level books, songs, and rhymes followed by monitored social play. This month's theme is love and emotions, and you can register online on their websites. So, you know, something to, you know, for, a resource for, for parents. Another thing that, you know, the IU is doing on their website is they are putting out videos, it's their IU videos, and they're doing that on a regular basis to try to introduce the public to their staff, and, you know, it, they, they sit down and they interview all of the important members over there and what their role is and what they're doing, and it's a great way to introduce them and, you know, help the community get involved and see what their roles are and, you know, help the community get more involved in, in the IU and, and what's happening there. And then the last thing that I wanted to share with you, and I can vouch, because I've been ordering these treats every single year, and my kids eat them all as fast as they possibly can, so I can vouch for how amazing they are. The WOW program, you know, and, and they, they sell treats year-round, but I think Valentine's Day is the most popular and they have really great treats, but it's, it's, you know, our, our students, you know, with disabilities who are in this program and they're creating and selling all of these baked goods, and it's, it's, it's a really wonderful program. And so, you know, definitely, I'll see if we can post this on our website somewhere so people can see the order form for this, you know, but you can contact, you can contact the WOW program at (215) 529-2601, or you can email, well, we'll put the email on there because if I read it, you're, I'll have to do the like A is an apple kind of thing for you. So I'll, I'll save you, I'll save you all of that, but the treats are amazing, great thing to do, and it benefits our kids, so, you know, that, that's always my gift to my kids, is when I go and get all of these treats for Valentine's Day. So, you know, and I guess I should tell you the, the date that those need to be, I think they have a date, a deadline. They must be received by February 1st if you want them for Valentine's Day. And next up is the personnel report. Mrs. Walters is gonna, is gonna do this for Dr. Arnold today. All right, the personnel committee met on January 14th. We discussed revisions to the director of transportation position due to the notice of retirement given by our current director, Mr. Geiger, and we discussed the recommendation of adding five building-based substitutes to fulfill teaching assistant substitute positions. There's a couple items. The first one is a motion to approve agreement between Penrich School District and employee number seven eight zero zero. First and second. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I guess. Okay. Motion carries eight zero. All right, the next item is a motion to approve updated, motion to approve updated director of transportation job description. His seconded by Mrs. Dolan. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, and the last item is a motion to approve five support staff building-based substitute, two for the high school, one for the middle, and two for elementary through EFS, formerly sourced for teachers through the end of the 2018, 2019 school year at a per dam rate of ninety dollars. Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members?
I just want to explain what, what this is for the public and people who may not have been at the committee meeting. This is a recommendation, much like we have building subs for teachers, this is a recommendation to bring in building-based subs for support staff. Just like getting an adequate substitute and our failed-to-fill rate to the teacher staff can be a problem, it is also a problem for our support staff. So to have a teaching assistant or a personal care assistant missing is also significant for those classrooms. We took a look at our data, we are averaging about five failed-to-fills a day, and they do pretty much fall between the high school with two, and the middle school with one, and the elementary school with two most days in terms of our averages. So we're going to try this for source for teachers, we're going to incentivize it, not only are they coming to the same district, we're also going to give them five dollars more an hour than the rate they would have if they're working there. So we're hoping that we'll find these five people who'll be able to fill in some of those spots in the classroom where there are missing support staff.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, and the next personnel committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 4th. Policy, Ms. Kildare?
So we have a final approval of the school board policy 808, motion to approve food services policy.
I can't hear you.
Motion to approve food service policy 808, final approval of this particular policy. Mark, Erica, did you want to say anything else on it or no?
I'll second. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Next up is a motion to approve the first reading of policy 916, volunteers.
I'll second. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
And the next policy committee meeting is scheduled for March 5th.
Okay, committee reports, technology, Mr. Rice?
There was no technology meet, uh, committee meeting in January, the next technology meeting will be in September.
Okay, next up is the Upper Bucks County Technical School, Mrs. Dolan?
Sure, thank you. We had our reorganization meeting on 12/20. Henrich was up for the chair seat, so our new chair, me, for one year. Quaker Townes, who are our vice chair, David Ashmanowicz, and Palisades is serving as treasurer, and that is Mr. Jim Hollowell. We formed our ad hoc committees to do negotiations with both bargaining units, and both bargaining units have started negotiations. We had student of the month for November was Kyle Masseck, small engine senior from Palisades. December was Ellen Orser, who Mr. Bolton mentioned, senior from Henrich. January, student of the month, with Megan Jackson from Quaker Townes. I have a list of companies who made donations, Ferguson Supply, Coopersburg Kenworth, Bartlett Tree Experts, RJ Heard, vice president of Darien Metal Fabricators, Home Builders Association, Contractors Edge of Pennsylvania, Brassalente Manufacturing Company Incorporated, and I just wanted to take a minute to recognize these great folks. We were, we're really appreciative, appreciative of their generosity, they make a huge difference in the students' experiences at the Tech School, and they can't be thanked enough. We had our annual breakfast with Santa, and it was a huge success, with over two hundred people coming for breakfast. Part of the proceeds went to the 22nd Annual Cookies for Hospice Patients and Families. Additionally, FFA collected donations and made cookies for local farmers during the holiday season. We had a very successful Chapter 339 report. It was reported with no corrections and several commendable remarks for how our school operates, and I have a brief overview of what Chapter 339 is in case somebody isn't aware, I wanted to make sure everybody knows what it is. It is an audit review of the school, a team assembled by PDE comes in for three days and reviews our programs, guidance, special education, administration, safety, maintenance, budget grants, equipment, school improvement, NACI scores, instructional materials, the three sending districts' guidance plans, everything and anything dealing with the school. This audit is done every five years to make sure we are in compliance with PDE regulations. We have a lot of commendable actions and no corrective actions throughout the school, and this is a huge undertaking from the administration as well as our instructors and staff. They had a really nice quote in there from the auditor, she, I'll summarize it, "We commend you and your staff for your efforts to comply with all requirements of Chapters Four and Three Through Nine for providing quality career and technical education programs to your students. We were very impressed with the cooperation from staff students and the hospitality provided." Our yearly audit report was successful with no major incidents to report. Mrs. Free was out at our last January meeting and presented their findings and an overview of the audit. Over seven hundred students came in for tours during the month of December. Recruitment of eighth graders has started by all sending districts, and our recruiters have been to open houses for incoming high school students and have been very positive feedback. Our student liaisons mentioned about the food truck, and so all that sounds great, I will touch on that. They also mentioned about Skills USA, District 11, January 30th. It's open to the public if anybody would like to join, come on up. I have a list here of about thirty-five students from Henrich that are going to be there. I can leave it down there if anybody's interested in seeing if he's going to be there, but, and for respect for everybody's time, I won't read every name, although I'd like to. HOSA, which is health occupations, they're headed to a conference in King of Prussia, April 3rd to the 5th. Forty-five cosmetology students will be attending the New York International Beauty Show March the 12th. That's always a great time for them. Seven skills students are going to be heading to New York City to see King Kong on 4/27. This is sponsored by Skills and is at no cost to the Tech School. This is a very big deal, and really proud of our metalworking, our machining class. They have re, they, our machining class, NIMS credentials were renewed, and NIMS is National Institute for Metalworking Skills, so they won't be up again until 12/18 of '23, and that is a huge accomplishment for our machining shop. The OAC Occupational Advisor Committee added twenty-five new members, and we had a great turnout for our fall OAC meeting. Coming up in the spring is, is another. If anyone you know could be interested, or you're interested, we're always looking for industry industry experts to join our occupational advisory committees. They mentioned about Farm Show, and I have just a little more to add, I guess. This was the 40th year for the Upper Bucks Tech School to be showing at Farm Show. They did have the Grand Champion pegged, and three students attended the FFA Conference and received their iconic blue FFA jackets. Our program advisor, Mrs. Caitlin Dank, is working on getting the Upper Bucks chapter of FFA back on track. We're very proud of their students who made the trip out there. It's a lot of work. I did it. It is a lot of work with your animal. In addition to our Grand Champion, we had four animals in total go, including our Grand Champion, four animals go to auction, which is wonderful. Up there also, Joe Murphy, our supervisor, Brown's is retiring. He's been a wonderful asset to the school. And Assistant Director Kathleen Plasnarski has accepted a director position. Her last day will be 3/17, and it has been a pleasure to work with her. And Lynn Hanson is retiring from the business department, and I'd like to wish Joe, Kathleen, and Lynn best wishes on all their future endeavors. Additionally, at the January board meeting, we approved the Bucks IU to facilitate hiring of a new assistant director. We use the Bucks IU for filling our superintendent position, and it had a very positive experience with Mark and Steve, so I'm very optimistic going forward with their services to help us at the tech school. I also have that December 20th meeting, Mr. Klein from Quaker Town made a suggestion of not having the chair and the superintendent ever make an overlap of times. That can happen, and it will be for a six-month period. Ms. Vanis-Clements spoke on that and gave her suggestion, so you can, if you, would you like to say anything about it?
Sure, so, you know, essentially, they, Mr. Klein had made the suggestion that it would be a good idea to not have the chair and the superintendent be from the same sending district. And so, you know, I did a couple of charts and shared them at the filing meeting to, you know, different scenarios of ways to, you know, proposals to fix that so that that wouldn't happen in the future. And so that's something that'll be an ongoing discussion to see, you know, which one they, you know, which kind of plan they would be more in favor of. You know, we could, we could basically, right now, the way that it works, the cycle for the chair starts in December, when the, you know, when the reorganization meeting is, where the superintendent starts July 1st, and that's why you have that weird overlap, because they don't start and stop at the same time. And so you could either extend the chair position for a two-year term to make sure that that wasn't an overlap and fix it that way, or you could line up the two and move, have the superintendent start in December as well. You know, those are two of the options, and then there were others that we talked about. So that'll be something that, you know, if there's support over the JOC, you know, that would be something that would possibly come in our direction.
Thank you. Okay. The only other thing that I have left is, out front on the stage, I left menus that the culinary, culinary students are gonna be doing, and the cafeteria manager, Amber Ott, have put together, is, one of them is a Super Bowl menu. There's wings, party trays, you can order by 125. I ordered last year, it was really great, came with preheating, or reheating instructions, very convenient. The other is a Valentine's Day take-home menu, that's out there. And the other flyer I have out front on the stage is for breakfast with the Easter bunny. Additionally, culinary will be selling pizzas the day before the Super Bowl, you can go in and get them for $5 a pizza. So that's all out there if anybody wants any. Yes, they are bacon home pizzas, they're very good. All right, so after that, it won't be as long next time, this was just November's, December's, and January's stuff, so my apologies. So the only thing I am looking for, a motion, I'll make the motion to approve the following appointments to the Upper Bucks County Tech School Committee, Ms. Megan Vanis-Clements for a term of three years, and David Rice as an alternate from December of 18 to December of 19.
I'll second. Thank you. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
And we meet this February 21st up at the tech school, and if anybody would like to come to that meeting, you're really welcome.
Thank you. Act 48, Mrs. Walters?
Okay, so I had a scheduling conflict and actually did not attend the Act 48 meeting the other day, so I'm gonna defer to Dr. Price to give us an update and hold this discussion.
Thanks, Mrs. Walters. So we talked about a couple of things in Act 48 on January 17th. We talked about allowable professional education activities. In other words, what counts for Act 48 credit, what doesn't count. Talked about the 2018-19 Trade Day, and how those professional earning hours will be earned next school year. Talked about the 2019-2020 district calendar. And then the one thing I would highlight is, we talked about mentors and buddies, and kind of the system we have in place currently, mentors are assigned to new professional staff members that are going through our induction program. But there was no formal program in place for someone that already holds an induction certificate, but they're new to Penrich. So a buddy would be assigned to them, and they would have a checklist and log hours on a smaller scale than a mentor would, but they still have very similar obligations. But they would be teaching them things that are new, that are specific to Penrich. So procedures and guidelines and due dates and technology that we use and those sorts of things, so they have that ongoing support. So currently, we have volunteers doing that. This will be a more formal system, that they're responsible for reviewing with these mentors. So if you hear the word buddy, that's what that means. But mentors and buddies, everybody gets partnered with somebody.
Thank you. The next Act 48 committee is March 14th. Thank you. Penridge Area Coordinating Committee, Ms. Thompson?
The Penridge Area Coordinating Committee, which is not a tongue twister, did not meet, but we will be meeting this Thursday, and I would like to encourage you all to attend. This is a great time to, considering everything going on in the district, we heard about the quarries, the quarry issues, and I think this would be a great time to come out. So our next meeting is this Thursday, the 24th, at the Penridge Community Center at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. And the Penridge Community Education Foundation, Mrs. Cullen?
Thank you. We met on January 5th, and once again, we are going, you know, following up on things that we had talked about last month. I think I saw the email for the SAT Boot Camp. If you're on the school district's email server, you should have gotten that. That's a good program that PCEF provides, or, you know, organizes for the school district for kids who are going to be taking the SAT. We also talked about our upcoming, the Lovely Evening, which is in April, and our perk night, Joe, the perk, April 1st, I think it is, yeah, April Fool's Day. No fooling, you don't have to cook dinner. You can come, and they will give us 10% of the, you know, their profits for the night will go to the Penridge Community Education Foundation. One other thing I want to make sure I note, it was that you may remember that for the holidays, PCEF offered that you could, you know, instead of buying teachers a little tchotchke or whatever for Christmas or Hanukkah, you could make a donation to PCEF in that teacher's name. And so I asked at our meeting if that is available all year round, and it is. So at any time, you know, if you want to say a thank you to a teacher, or give somebody a kudo, and have it honor them by making a donation to the PCEF, you can do that. You can go to the website. We're looking still for members, or actually, I think we have our community members, but student members. There's an application that will go out for students to submit if they would like to be a student member, just like our student member, our liaisons to the school board. But these students would also have some responsibility to help at the events that PCEF has. And, you know, we are also trying to coordinate, to learn and grow by coordinating with other education foundations from around the area, kind of get together with them and see what they have, what they do, how they run their organization, maybe share some ideas, get some ideas from them. But we haven't organized that meeting yet. And then we also have an effort by a couple of the PCEF members who are going to